Stand, say the Pledge of Allegiance with me.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. So before we begin the agenda tonight, uh, we would, I would like to mention that we have one of our members of this board here at his last full agenda meeting. Um, and I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the years of service to not only our country and our town, but to other special interest groups that selectmen Hogan has helped with. Selectman Hogan served his country during the Vietnam War. He was a member of the Board of Health for 12 years, and Bob, please correct me if I'm getting any of this wrong. He's completing his 12th year of member of this board. He was the town's Veterans Agent for 18 years. And he was also a member of the Burlington Rotary Club, past president, volunteer for Special Olympics, he was also the town's liaison to the Disability Access Commission when he was with the Veterans Office. And he was also a member of the People Helping People, including the Board of Directors. So Bob, I know the other members have something they want to say, but I just want to acknowledge you as a friend, as a neighbor, a fellow board member, that all you've done for this country and this town. Mr. Priest.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Gosh, Bob, I mean, that's a lot. You've done a lot for this community, you know, and I think that as we move forward, it's important to acknowledge the pillars of our community that have done so much and served so long as you have. You know, and I mean, me personally, you know, all the mentoring and assistance that you've provided me, you know, I'm, I'm very thankful and I'm sad to see you go. But expect phone calls and text messages when you don't want them. Thank you for everything.
We promise it won't be competitive. Mr. Morandi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Bob, what can I say? It's a very, very long time you've been in town, but then again, our age catches up with us after a while. I remember in my first election when I ran, it was a campaign thing before that at Cafe Escudero, and you took me aside and sat me down and kind of went over some of the rules and regulations about being a selectman, what to do, what not to do, and any questions I had, be right there. You answered them for me. The mentorship that you showed me along the way, the Alcohol Subcommittee, the only two guys that don't drink in town probably that are on the Alcohol Subcommittee. So I know that's an outstanding joke with us, but from the bottom of my heart, seriously, thank you for everything that you taught me along the way. And it wasn't easy sometimes between me and you. We had our, we've had our discussions over, over the past nine, eight, seven years that I've been here. So, um, turned out to be good friends and just thank you for everything for the town and thank you for helping me along.
Mr. Runyon.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bob, what can I say? Just a remarkable career here in town collectively, you know, over 40 years of service in various areas, giving back to the town. I wish we had more folks like you. On a personal level, we've, you and I have had a very good relationship. Particularly my first year here on the board was, just say it was, uh, wasn't a whole heck of a lot of love when I first come on my first year and you were, you were very helpful to me during that time. We were also transitioning from one town administrator to another and I will, I will always be grateful for, for you sort of guiding me through that. That first year was, you know, tough for me, so it was great to have, uh, have a friend, uh, to be able to reach out to. So, thank you very much. I hope you and Nancy and your daughter and your grandson all enjoy just a wonderful, wonderful retirement. And thanks, thanks again for just everything you've done for the town of Burlington. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Runyon. Before we go further, Representative Ken Gordon would like to say a few words. Mr. Gordon? Yes, please.
Okay. Thank you. It's, uh, thank you very much. To your tickets and to the members of the Select Board is really bittersweet and with mixed emotion that I say goodbye to you as a member of the Select Board, but not as a friend. You care so much about the town of Burlington. It's in your blood. You, I'm sure it's one of the first things you think of when you wake up is, what can we do? For all these years, I know you've thought about what can we do to make this town better? And it's, it's come through. When I started, um, I, when I started to serve as the State Representative for Burlington, you reached out to me and said, we've got work to do. I want to explain to you some of the issues that I've been working on, some of the things that I know, and we worked together from day one for the good of this town, and I really appreciate the resource that you gave me, the guidance that you gave me, the support that you gave me, and it was always for the good of Burlington, for the, for the best interests of Burlington. And I, and I really appreciate it. It's hard to replace. It's hard to find people like you who are willing to give so much. When, in the time that you served as veteran, served as one thing, and then I have something to give you, but I'm sorry, it's, it's hard to stop. In your term as Veteran Services Officer, I met so many veterans and they'd come to me and they'd tell me they had an issue and, and I'd ask them, did you talk to Bob Hogan? And mostly they did. They knew, they knew you, they were comfortable with you. But in the rare cases where they didn't, they came to see you and then they'd contact me again or they'd call our office and say, why didn't I approach Bob Hogan sooner? He, you know, my, my, my issue was solved with dignity, with respect. I feel so much better. And so that was always one of the things I knew I could do when I met a veteran was, was, was point out the work that you do and how much you care. And it was always my pleasure to work with you on issues involving veterans because I knew of the, I, I just knew the service that you provided. So we have, we, I think you're familiar with the citations that we've given to people who have contributed a lot to towns and to the Commonwealth and all of that, but, but every once in a while, I, I come across somebody, in your case, I've come across you from the moment I started in public service, that has just gone above and beyond and stay, and keeps going above and beyond all the time. And I learned a couple of years ago that we could ask the governor to fly a state flag over the, over the Capitol in commemoration of, I don't know if you can see this, but of an event. This is a flag that's, that I'm not going to give you actually, but it looks like this. And this is a cover for a citation that's not in here.
I will cherish both.
I'm going to take it home with me. But I bring it here because the flag that I am going to give you later this week is flying over the Capitol of the state house right now. And it will be taken down and put in, in this frame. This frame I really will give you, the frame part. But, and what it will do is it will tell you that this flew today in commemoration of this very special day. It will be filled with, with a citation from the governor. Can I come around and approach and give it to you? And again, it's my honor to present it to you. Well, I'm going to, if someone wants to grab the picture.
Where's your pitches right on here? Come over here and do the pitches.
We'll do the pitches after. We'll do pitches later.
Okay, so I'm going to stay here and then the picture, I'll hand it to you since it's essentially a prop. At this point.
Is that it, Ken?
That's it. I'm done.
I see Richard. Richard's usually here to take our pictures for.
All right, well, to a man who I know has no props, but Mr. Sagrino.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, it's always difficult to go at the end, uh, but I've, I've had the pleasure of working with Bob first as a coworker and then over the last 12 years as a Select Board Member and the first thing that struck me about him was his advocacy and passion for the town's veterans and also for all of our persons with a disability and his work with the Disability Access Commission. And, uh, as I've worked with him as a, in his role as a Select Board Member, um, he's just always willing to volunteer, always willing to help out with whatever needed to be done. And, um, you will be missed, I'm sure. I hope, hope that you will still be around. Uh, you'll still, um, swing by the Town Hall and let us know what's going on and also be available when we need, when we need help as well. But, uh, thank you for being a great coworker and elected official during my time knowing you, and thank you for being a good friend.
So that being said, Representative Gordon brought you a prop. Well, we have something for you that's not a prop. You know what you'd like?
It's going to work out perfectly, if you really think about it, because if someone could unwalk it. Oh, boy.
Oh, boy.
All right.
So much for that.
You can sit in your chair and look at the flag.
Actually, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, uh, Select Board, thank you.
Paul? Jay D? You're hitting out of this. Come on.
Yep, yep, you just told me.
All right. All I want to say at this point, Mr. Hogan, is I bet Riley, your grandson Riley, will look good in it.
On your lap.
Yes. All right, we're going to move on with the agenda. Uh, item 442, debt refunding and reissuing of bonds. Mr. Genino, Mr. Denizio. Or is it Mr. Genino only?
Good evening to members of the board. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
He got his chair here. He's all.
Wow. Okay. When he comes back, I'll say a few words. Oh. I have had the pleasure of, uh, working, uh, with Bob many, many years. We really got to know each other back in the, with the Disability Access Commission. As he, uh, you know, it's, it's one of those committees, I think, where you did yeoman's work, brought me along and helped me understand some of the needs and and I always remember the Veteran Memorial Day with you and Betty. Those were some of the memorable moments going on, but the board may not know, Bob and I served one year, I believe, together. My last year on the board was Bob's first year on the board. And, uh, to me, that was a, a, a good alternative for Bob as he continued along for the many years of helping this community. And I just want to say thank you. You've always been a friend and you've always done a great job. So I will get on to my, uh, thank you.
Mr. Genino.
Thank you for allowing me that. What you have here this evening is a few items. One, uh, we're in the process of issuing $4.5 million of, uh, in bonds related to some, uh, roads and that were approved in 2020 and some work on the MWRA Phase 1 and Phase 2A. In that process, uh, we've discussed the reissuing of some bonds that go back to July of 2012. We'd only reissue those if there was a, uh, ultimate savings for the town. When we first discussed it with John Denizio, myself and Hilltop Securities, our advisors, we were looking at a $1.2 million savings by present value savings by reissuing those bonds. And unfortunately, with the, uh, changes in the interest rates, we're now looking at close to $500,000 in savings, if we did budgetary savings. So it still looks, uh, we still believe it's a positive approach. Uh, we're not obligated to do it if, as we move ahead with the 4.5, the $10.5 million that we refinanced in 2012. As we get closer to it, if the number doesn't make sense to do it, we're not obligated to move forward. So we won't lose any money, uh, trying to save, as I said, $500,000. With that, uh, there is, I attached a, uh, a memo from him, Hilltop. We do need a, it was suggested that we get a vote by the Board of, the Select Board to, uh, let us continue to, uh, authorize the issuance of refunding the bond. So if I could have that vote, uh, I'd appreciate that. Then I'll move on to some other areas.
Are there any questions or does anybody want to make that motion?
I'll make the motion, uh, Mr. Chairman, that we approve the refunding of the bond from July 2012.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I think there's a motion in.
There is a motion.
Oh, there is. Okay, I'm sorry.
Do you have a barber? I got it.
Go right ahead, yeah. Thank you. I got it. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
That in order to save interest costs, the treasurer is au, the treasurer is authorized to provide for the sale and issuance of bonds under General Law, Chapter 44, Section 21A, to refund all or any portion of the remaining principal of and redemption premium and interest of the town's general obligation bonds dated July 26, 2012. And that for this purpose, the treasurer is authorized to provide for the preparation and distribution of a preliminary official statement, provided however that no bonds shall be issued under this vote unless and until the final interest rates and other terms of the refunding bonds are approved by the board.
Is that the motion?
Wait, wait a minute, let me, uh, I'm sorry, additional sentence here. As the vote indicates, the refunding is subject to final approval by the Board of, by the Select Board when the final details of the refunding bonds are determined. That's the motion.
I'll second that.
Motion's made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. Mr. Genino.
Thank you, gentlemen. Next, as you would see in your information received over the weekend or on Friday, is request to ratify the useful life of the Public Safety Communications Network, which was approved by town meeting in May of 2021. We're looking to possibly ban that for a one-year purpose. But what's very important is that we got the useful life and I got that information from, um, the chief, fire chief. And it really deals with how long of a bond one could take. If you look at communications equipment, it's usually treated as a five-year asset. This is, goes beyond just communication with the, uh, the whole communication network and the upgrade and replacement. So, uh, the chief felt it was 20 years. The, uh, our bond council suggested that, uh, again, we note that, uh, the useful life and, uh, and that the board vote to allow us to, to maximize the, uh, our bonding capacity. And there is again a recommended, uh, motion to do that. The Phase 1 of this communication network was $1.24 million. So, uh, there was, there was a, a sheet that was forwarded. I could read the motion if you'd want before someone.
Sagrino?
Yeah, I was just going to say, we could read that motion, uh, into the record.
Okay. Mr. Genino.
Uh, it's hereby, uh, voted that the maximum useful life of the Public Safety Network project to be financed with the proceeds of a $1,240,000 borrowing authorized by the vote of the Town Hall. Town passed May 12, 2021, Article 12, is hereby determined pursuant to General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7-1 to be 20 years.
So moved by Mr. Morandi, seconded by Mr. Hogan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. Mr. Sagrino?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to say thank you to, uh, Town Treasurer, Gary Genino. This is one of the ways that, um, we stay on top of the town's debt. Uh, it's very similar to refinancing your house at lower interest rates, uh, but it's obviously a much more complex transaction when you're, when you're working with bonds. So, uh, thank you very much to you and your team for the work that you did on it.
Mr. Chairman, one question for Gary or Paul. Um, how long have we been working with Hilltop?
Uh, they, they were here prior to me arriving at the town, so.
Okay. So they, they were involved with this in the, originally back in?
Yes, yes. And they've been very active with, uh, John and I meet, have met with them quite a few times and very active in looking at this and, uh, as I said, when we started talking about the refinancing, the bonds was over a million dollar savings, but interest rates are going against us, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just, uh, quickly, so when do you, we should, you'll be back to see us shortly for the, uh, bonding of the, the MWRA project and the, uh, some road work?
Yes, we should be back in the, uh, near the end of April. I wasn't sure of Bob's vote, so I wanted to go, no. No, we'll be ready. We have to meet with the, uh, S and P Rating Group, uh, that's scheduled for April 5th. Uh, Bond Council, Lark and Lord, uh, has to review some information. We've, we've gotten all the information from the clerk. I got that this morning. Uh, we have some information we need to get from the DPW, which we'll get next week. So it's, it's a, it's a long process, a lot of people looking at it, but our, our rating is AAA and I, I would venture to guess that we will maintain that. Hope I'm right.
Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Genino.
Thank you.
Okay, next item in the agenda is item 443, the Mill Pond deed. Is, Mr. Keely, Mr. Keely.
President, thank you.
Okay, take it away.
Mr. Chairman, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Congratulations.
Mr. Hogan?
Thank you.
Best of luck, best of luck. So what's your, what you have before you tonight is, um, a deed for 1.6 acres of land that's being trans, proposed to be transferred to the town in care of the Conservation Commission. It's on Chandler Road. It abuts the Mill Pond Conservation Area. It's part of a development that, um, Greg Hickox did on Chandler Road. They built three houses and then gave, they're proposing to give half the land to the, to the town. There's a vernal pool on it, but more importantly, to the residents, it also provides an access, direct access to the Mill Pond Conservation Area from Chandler Road. There had been previously a sort of, um, illicit connection to private land, um, which he's, he's built over, so he gave us land to have another access. So you need to accept the deed.
Thank you, Mr. Keely. I'll start with, Mr. Hogan, any questions?
No.
Priest?
Uh, no, no questions. No, just a quick, uh, uh, is there, is there any type of parking going to be on that 1.6 acres at all for the, I know, I know it's, I know where it is. I know everything about that reservoir, probably like you do too. Uh, I was wondering if there's going to be any type of a four, five, seven car parking lot in that spot there. Residents are going to park all over the roads and I know we're going to have a walkway through there. I know it's kind of late in the game for asking that, but, uh, just a quick question.
So there really isn't any room and we're sort of, uh, told the neighbors in that area that we're not going to promote this as like a, a main access into the conservation area. It's really just for the residents in that area. We have plenty of parking elsewhere. We have lots of parking at Town Line Road and we have parking, obviously, at the water treatment plant. So, so, um, we're, we're not going to, we're not going to put on any maps that there's parking there and we'll probably try to discourage people who aren't just in that neighborhood from accessing it from there.
Fantastic. Thank you, John.
Thank you, Mr. Keely. Mr. Runyon?
Uh, only, only, um, we do see these from time to time. Um, I think it's a welcome addition, particularly about in the existing conservation area, so, uh, okay, no problem with this at all.
All right. Again, we have a suggested motion on this one. Anybody wants to make it?
Okay. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that, uh, move to authorize the Conservation Commission to accept as a gift, uh, a parcel of land located at Lot 4, Mill Pond Lane. Shown as Lot, uh, Number 4 on a plan entitled definitive subdivision plan, Mill Pond Estates, Mill Pond Lane, Burlington, Massachusetts. Lot layout sheet scale 1, uh, equals 30 feet, May 14, 2020, prepared by Dresser Williams &amp; Way Incorporated. Uh, 572 Boston Road, Unit 5, Lyricah, Mass. And recorded with Nox County Southern District Registry of Deeds as Plan Number 85 of 2021, including 69,826.21 plus or minus square feet and owned by GTH Homes LLC pursuant to General Law, Chapter 30, Section 8C. And further, the Chair shall be authorized to execute any documents required to effectuate said gift.
Just a clarif, clarification, Chapter 40, correct?
Isn't that what I said?
No.
What did I say?
30.
Did I really?
Yeah.
Wow. All right. Well, yeah, I meant to say Chapter 40.
Okay, just want to make the record. It's a lot.
For the record, yeah.
Okay, second by Mr. Morandi. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. Thank you, Mr. Keely.
Great, thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, item 444 is used to the town common for wedding?
Do we have anyone?
Jim, and I believe we have, uh, the applicant in the virtual meeting.
Okay, would the applicant please identify himself for the record?
Yes, this is he, Ashraf Morsi.
Okay, uh, um, we, did you want to add anything to the information you already gave us or?
Nothing to add at this time.
All right, I assume everybody had a chance to read that. Uh, any questions for the proponent? Comments? Mr. Hogan?
Yeah, um, good evening, sir. Is, is, what, is this just the ceremony or are you having? What are you actually having for that hour and a half? Just the ceremony, sir. Just the ceremony, okay. And then how long do you actually anticipate that occurring? Uh, we had allotted, I believe, an hour and a half, but I can't imagine it taking, uh, longer than an hour, I believe. Because if you haven't made up your mind by then, sir, you have to. Is there a rain date or anything on this, sir? Uh, no rain date for this. Okay. Uh, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anything further? Now, my only comment is we see weddings on the common all the time and we appreciate you coming to us for this. Um, at least we have advanced notice on this one, you know? But, um, that being said, I'll be looking for a motion to approve the use of the town common for the wedding on May 14, 2022.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Second.
Made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Congratulations and good luck on the 14th of May.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, uh, item 445 is discussion on the communication plan. Uh, Mr. Priest?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, so. So I'm just going to, uh, say that, uh, very excited to be kicking this off. Uh, this is our pre-kickoff. Our kickoff before the kickoff. Uh, essentially, uh, tonight, uh, we have with us Morgan and Tanya from the Collins Center, uh, who are going to give us a quick presentation. Um, they're going to be our team moving forward, so we can ask any questions ahead of the actual kickoff. Um, and then we'll schedule more time moving forward to kind of get this kicked off. I think I said kickoff about 40 times in the last 30 seconds. With that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Morgan and Tanya, who are both here with us virtually. Uh, thank you both for being here.
Thank you. Um, it's good to, it's good to see all of you. Um, can you hear me? I'm, I'm Tanya. Nice, nice to meet, um, all of you. Um, and I do have, I swear it's only, um, a five-slide deck slideshow, so I'm going to see if that works for us. But, um, let's see. Not used to, to this format. Can people, can people see that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Um, so Morgan, um, I, I guess we should first introduce ourselves. Morgan, do you want to, do you want to start that off?
Sure. Uh, my name's Morgan Clark. I am the public, I'm a public service manager from the Collins Center. Sure, my name's Morgan Clark. I am the public, I'm a public service manager from the Collins Center, and I've been on the Collins Center team for a couple of months. But prior to that, I was working in local government for the past 10 years. And I have to apologize, I'm gonna probably stay muted as much as possible, but I'm here to answer questions. It's just dinner time behind this curtain. So things are a little loud with my, yeah. Okay.
And I'll take a moment to introduce myself. My name is Tanya Shalopp. I'm an associate with the Collins Center. I've worked with the Collins Center in various capacities for about five years and do communications work, but also organizational structure and human resources and some other things for the Collins Center. And for those of you that aren't familiar with us, our full name is the Edward J. Collins Jr. Center for Public Management. We're based out of UMass Boston, and we were essentially set up to help cities and towns all around the Commonwealth with various types of projects and expertise. So that's what this would be right here, the communications and assessment plan that we would be helping the town with. So let's see if I can get this to advance. Morgan, do you want to talk about this or do you want?
Sure, so we have, we're, this is a new project area for us, a practice area. We've been kind of building these projects really based on what the city or town that we're working with needs. So my understanding was that Burlington was looking for both some help with internal communications as well as external, that we'd like to really hear from you. But this is my attempt at just trying to show that, you know, these are the different ways that communication can happen in municipal government. So you, there's the communication of, or there's how the town communicates with its constituents. There's how individual departments communicate with each other or don't. And then, of course, there's the how boards and staff communicate with each other. So these are all aspects of communication that we can help Burlington with. So we'd really like to hear from you what you're envisioning. And like I said, this is something that, that we've been doing and that we're really building a practice area around on all, all three sides.
So do you want me to take this or do you want to go, Morgan? So we've broken this down into a two-phased project. The first one being internal communications, and I think that's fairly self-explanatory. How communications work within the town, department, department, boards, commissions, et cetera. And during this phase, we would be doing a lot of interviewing, document review, et cetera, to find out what's happening now and then have recommendations for improvements there. And then Phase 2 would be the external communications section, and that is really how information gets to your constituents as well as how constituents communicate with the town. And you can see there, the deliverable would be a communications plan for that segment of the, of the project. This is our approximate timeline. Although, of course, it depends on when we launch this and how available everyone is within the town to get to our final deliverables. And I think that's it. I did promise short and sweet in terms of the PowerPoint there. So I'm gonna stop sharing unless people wanna take a look at any of that specifically. But I know this is our pre-kickoff kickoff. So it really, we wanted to take this opportunity to find out if you've got any specific interests, areas of focus, or questions for us.
Thank you both. Nick, I was gonna go to you first because you're speaking this. Anything to add before I go to the other members of the board?
Nothing to add. I just wanna say that I'm actually most excited about finding out, external communications-wise, what we could be doing. You know, I think I've been harping on this for three years now. You know, this, this notion of how, you know, because media has changed so much and the way people consume media has changed so much that, you know, I feel as though there has to be a way that, you know, we as the town of Burlington can kind of step in, you know, with a better, more focused way for residents to kind of opt in and, you know, stay apprised of what's happening. And we are doing some of those things now. I think we're all aware of that. But, you know, to be able to create a more cohesive, you know, unified communication ethic is, would be fantastic. So with that, you know.
Thank you, Nick. Mr. Hogan?
No, I agree. This is long overdue. There have been a number of times when we've been on subcommittees and boards with other members of the staff around town or the constituents, and the question always comes up about the best way to communicate. And there are so many good suggestions that we needed, I think, somebody with an outside view looking in to kind of hone it all down to the basics of what we need and can do.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan. Mr. Mirandio?
No.
Mr. Mirandio?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know, Nick, you mentioned you've been sort of pushing this for a few years, and I have to admit, initially, I was kind of skeptical, thinking that this, you know, this really a wise investment for the town to make. But listening to you over time and, you know, providing us with information, the more I read, the more interested I was. And, you know, I'm at this point convinced that this is indeed a good investment, not only help us here internally as a government body, but as a town line as well. So I think it's a worthy endeavor. I presume that over the course of the next several months, we'll be having focus groups and so on and so forth. Everybody can participate in.
Yeah, absolutely. The report went into some of the specific buyers that they're looking to speak to. And then, you know, when we go to external communications, some focus groups, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mirandio. Me, myself as well, I really didn't know a lot about it, but over the last three years, and now that we're seeing some sort of outline and progress, I'm excited about what's down the road. It looks, it looks very interesting, and I think it'd be a great asset for our residents to have, to have this as well as us. It'd be good for us as well. So all positive, I think, on this side. Thank you for all your work on this, Nick. Tanya and Morgan, thank you for joining us tonight, and hopefully we'll be seeing you again not too distant future.
Great, thank you for your time, and it's great to meet all of you.
Likewise, thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is 446, update DEI.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, couple things. You know, I kind of wanted to take this time to talk for a minute. You know, something that I've been doing is trying to attend Ray Porch's Let's Talk About It sessions that he's been holding. And, you know, a big thing that he talks about is communication. You know, so quite nicely, these two are back-to-back. You know, but the notion of continual conversation is incredibly important. You know, so I wanted to share a couple of things and then hopefully, you know, just kind of gain alignment on a couple of things. I'd like to acknowledge that the entire DEI committee is here. They've all joined us in person. I want to thank all four of you for being here. I truly appreciate it. You know, so I, I think that, you know, we've, we've asked this question a couple of times, and I'm sure that we'll, we'll be asked it or we'll probably ask it ourselves again, you know, why are we doing this work, right? And, you know, over the last couple of weeks, I've had a couple of opportunities to sit down with Mayor Rigo and Dr. Mariska Baros of Revere, as well as Ray Porch and Patrick Larkin, to have conversations. And a couple of things have come up that have put, in a context for me, ways for the why behind all of this. The first is this notion of intent versus impact, right? You know, whether or not the intent of something was to be malicious, the impact that it's having is in fact a negative one, right? And so how can we, you know, begin to look at these things and say, you know, this is in fact causing a negative impact? Is there an opportunity to turn to a positive impact, right? You know, and I think that, you know, like that, that kind of began to frame it for me. And then Ray Porch told a very interesting anecdote, which was a fox happened to be peering into a lake one day, and he saw a fish, and he asked the fish, "How's the water?", and the fish said, "What water?". And you'd almost think that there'd be a punchline there. But it's this notion that, you know, our perspectives and our worldview is vastly different from where each of us stands. And to begin to acknowledge that, you know, and understand that, you know, where each of us comes from is different, regardless, you know, of who we are, I think is an important step forward is we continually have these conversations. So with that being said, whether or not this board would entertain discussion this evening, I wanted to align, as a committee, the DEIC has been talking a lot about, you know, our path forward. And so coming out of the report, there were some action items. And I just wanted to kind of get alignment from the board tonight that, you know, the things that were in that report, the four things, the DEI statement that hadn't been updated since 1986, the diversity scorecard, the language, and the, the mission statement update for this board are things this board is still comfortable with them moving forward with, and them us moving forward with. Because over the next couple of weeks, we're looking to really work on that. I know that I had stepped out of our last meeting, but I know that the committee chose subcommittees to work forward on these four things. So if there's, if there's no discussion or discussion warranted, I'll pause here for a moment, and I got one more thing to pry a lot about.
Anything at this point?
No.
Okay, so I'll take a lack of discussion as, as that we're comfortable moving forward with the items that we've presented in the report and that we can, we can continue that work, which I think will be great. The other thing is that I, I know that we're kind of holding off the election, you know, with Bob's departure. You know, we want to, you know, make sure that the new board is an opportunity to continue these discussions. So we'll, we'll be continuing it on, on the 11th, at which point I'd like to discuss a couple of things. I just want to say them now. You know, one is, you know, setting up a special meeting where we can invite members of the community to engage in a larger discussion, whether or not that is a joint meeting with the DEIC, so it can be a working, you know, thing, or, you know, we want to open it to the community for discussion. But I think that it would be good to have, you know, Joanne Faust from HR, Town Council, you know, ourselves, the DEIC, you know, as many folks as possible.
Ray Porch?
Ray Porch, yeah, you know, to participate in an open conversation. Because I really do believe that just talking about it and trying to, you know, get everyone on, at least in the same book, if not close to the same page, you know, is really important. Because I'm learning that this is a journey for all of us, and we're all on different points in that journey, you know, of understanding. And then, you know, look into some kind of educational seminar for the board, you know, something that we can do just that we understand from a language perspective, you know, you know, things that we can be, you know, perceiving as positive language, negative language, things like that. I also understand that the schools are doing an equity audit. I'd like to at least entertain a conversation around that. I don't know if it's, if it's right for the town or not. You know, but in terms of, you know, things that I'm hearing about as I talk to everybody, that came up in conversation. So with that, I'll stop talking, but I thank the board for your time this evening.
All right, so if I get this correct, we're planning on an agenda item on April 11th, and then, and I agree, a special meeting with all stakeholders?
Yeah.
Dedicated to that is probably, is definitely a good choice, so. Any further discussion? So it looks like we're moving forward?
Yeah, we can, so the, so the committee can move forward with our action items, and then as a board, we can regroup on the 11th, have some more conversation and figure out where we're going from there.
So we can work as one?
Yes.
Excellent. All right, we weren't gonna discuss this till the 11th. Did you want to entertain any discussion on this?
No, I mean, if, if the board wanted to add anything, you know, that's fine. I know it's on for an update, so I'm the one doing most of the blabbering. But, you know, if, if we wanted to put on the agenda for, you know, another DEI, you know, conversation, we can figure out, you know, how we'll handle it then.
I'm sorry, Nancy, you, you were set, all set with wait until the 11th or?
Could I make a comment at first time?
Aye. Aye. If it could be quick, because we have a lengthy agenda. Yes, sure. Just come up and identify.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm Nancy Monasera. I'm a member of the DEI Committee. I was hoping tonight, actually, to have a repeat of the apologies that were given at the meeting two weeks ago. Myself and my fellow members, none of us were here. And the second thing I would like to say is I'm disappointed that this is the first time in a month after Dr. BJ Addison Reed gave her report that the Select Board and the DEI Committee have had any direct communication. So having said that, I would like to move forward. I'm looking forward to working together, and I appreciate that we can schedule a special session and just get started on this really important work. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Nancy. For the record, I know a lot of people are upset. We heard it. The reason why the comments were made at the last meeting is because a lot of the emails we received said the Select Board should make a public apology at the next board, Select Board meeting, which is why it was done then. But I think moving forward, like you said, let's move forward. We're gonna discuss it on an agenda, discuss it in a special meeting, and we'll all move together as one.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is 447, discussion on the Community Preservation Act. Mr. Boyven and Mr. Cohen. Just come up and identify yourself for the record.
Good evening, Chairman Tigas, and members of the Select Board. My name is Larry Cohen, for the record. And with me tonight is Bill Boyven, a town meeting member. I'd like to take, before I get into the subject, if you'll lend me some discretion, I'd like to say a couple of words to Mr. Hogan. Bob, I have to tell you that, that Bill and I both would like to congratulate you on the many years of service to the town. It's, it's, it's very clear that you've put your heart and soul into the town, and I hope you have a well-deserved retirement. Personally, I have two particular memories of dealing with you. One is when my father needed services from you as a veterans' agent, and we had a number of things. We were, I talked to you a number of times, and you were very helpful. So I have not forgotten, so I'll just thank you again for that. The other is the, the unscheduled meetings at the Fish House. We see, we seem to be always running into you and enjoyed conversations with you there. It doesn't have much to do with the town of Burlington, but we got good fish there, yes. So I wish, I wish you all the best. Bill, likewise.
Yes, I do. Thank you very much for your service.
Gosh, the Fish House.
I know it.
God, jeez, Larry. That, that goes back a ways.
It does.
It does. All right. So now, Bill and I are both members of the Conservation Commission, but we are not here as members of the Conservation Commission. We are here tonight as citizen members of a committee called the Community Preservation Act Committee. We call it CPA for short, the CPA Committee. In addition to members from the Conservation Commission on this citizens' committee, we have participants from the Housing Partnership, the Recreation Commission, the Historical Commission, and Town Meeting. You have before you a brief, four-page handout, I assume. I assume it was in your packet. It is four pages, back-to-back handout. It's intended to be brief with two slides printed on each page, and I'll refer, I'll refer to occasionally Slide 1 and 2 or whatever the, the slide we're talking about. I have some additional copies here, and I believe if anybody wants one, we can just put them on maybe the center table. Also, I know that we gave a recent presentation to the school committee, and the Burlington Buzz posted this presentation online for anyone who is in particular would like to take, take a quick look. This coming May, the CPA Committee will be asking Town Meeting, through a warrant article, to put the Community Preservation Act on the ballot for the November 20, 2022 election. And the intent is to let the voters decide whether to become a CPA community. The Community Preservation Act, known as CPA, was passed into law by the Commonwealth in 2000 and signed by Governor Salucci. It was crafted to encourage towns to fund projects in four specific areas. Open space, recreation, historical preservation, and affordable housing, because these projects enrich the quality of life in a community. The state, I'm on the second slide now. The state collects funds for CPA through a fee on all real estate transactions at the Registry of Deeds. Burlington residents and businesses have been paying these fees at the Registry of Dees on buying and selling property since the year 2000, but we have not gotten any return on the monies that the state collects. but we have not gotten any return on the monies that the state collects in this way. The communities that vote to join the CPA, and there are 187 communities in the Commonwealth, two-thirds of the entire population of Massachusetts is in a CPA community now. And if we vote to do that, we would get access to those state funds by placing a small surcharge on our local real estate taxes. The state then shares those collected revenues with the member communities. With state contributions, each dollar raised by the additional surtax on our real estate taxes, each dollar would become $1.40, which is a very strong return on investment. So we on the committee are proposing, through this warrant article, a 1.5% surcharge, which is the most common amount that most communities adopt. The state allows you to go as high as 3%. Some towns have actually started at 1.5 and actually have raised it by a vote of their people to 3%. Okay, so on the next page of the handout, okay, Slide 3, the CPA allows four types of exemptions. The first two, the first $100,000 valuation of real estate for homes, residences, and businesses is exempt from the surcharge. Okay, so if you have a $600,000 home, the surcharge would only be on $500,000. They first subtract $100,000. Now, the whole program is sensitive to people in low income or moderate income. If you have low income and seniors 60 and over can opt out of paying it by requesting an exemption. For example, a family making less than $77,312, a family of two, 77,312, would qualify for a low-income exemption. And if they fill out a form, it's a state form, they fill it out every year, and the numbers, that number is actually based on your gross income minus medical expenses. So if you have a lot of medical expenses and you drop below that threshold, then you can just waive paying the extra surtax. Families of two seniors making, and a senior is 60 years old for the purposes of this, families of two seniors making less than $96,640, if you make less than that amount of money and you are 60 and over, you can also get an exemption. You just fill out the form and every year you don't have to pay the extra tax. So if the average tax that we have is if you have a $600,000 home, let's take a modest home, the tax for the year, the extra tax would be $75 for the year. So it's about $17 a quarter. So if, for some people, that could be significant in the town. So if that's the case, then if they qualify for those income thresholds, they can simply waive it. Slide 4 is a summary of the impact on the taxes. And as I said, I told you what it said, but basically, you have it here? Yeah. But basically, I already talked about the homeowner. If you have a commercial property, a small business, and you own $2 million worth of a building assessed at $2 million, you subtract the first $100,000 and the valuation would be 1.9 million. And a 1.5 surcharge would mean that you would pay at the current tax rate $753 more if you owned a $2 million building. Okay? Now, we have talked with, that brings up the subject. We have talked with the Chamber of Commerce, the Government Affairs Subcommittee. Many of those in our business community come from CPA towns. And they have told us in writing that they realize that a town that offers amenities like walking paths and recreation is good for business. In fact, where we have an initiative in town going for biotechnology, where do you think those people are coming from? They're coming from places like Cambridge, Lexington. These are places that we're trying to attract these businesses here. These people are used to having those amenities. So it's a point worth thinking. So through the Chamber of Commerce, they have also said that if this passes and we form a CPA committee that evaluates proposals from a wide range of people and businesses, they would like to have a member on that committee representing the business community. CPA provides a steady source of funding for preserving and improving a community's character and quality of life. So now for the, you can look at your handout, there's a few very quick things. What have other towns done? For example, Hamilton built a pool for town use, something that has been talked about in town. Some people would like to see that. Matapoiset, certainly bike paths are a subject. Bike paths going up Muller Road or bike paths going from the Lower Vine Brook Bike Path behind the quarry there in Lexington and could come up through the Housing Authority land, up through the Gutierrez land, and could actually finish up by Third Avenue. People have talked about that. Marion built structures to bring people into their scenic areas, a viewing platform. Slide 6, Amherst Bedford and Barnstable renovated historical properties in Burlington. Historical properties in Burlington, CPA funds could be used to renovate our historical properties. Slide 7, Tewksbury and Bedford, they created affordable housing. Okay, they did a housing for people with disabilities and they did a housing for a housing upgrade in Bedford. We could do similar types of things or even expand the housing that we have. Arlington, Slide 8, took a very one-out playground and they used CPA funds and totally made it a state-of-the-art playground, which the schools were very interested in as well. All right. Are you ready?
Yep.
Okay. Well, I've gone through half the presentation. Bill has a few more comments to make.
Thank you, Larry. I want to delve a little bit more into what Burlington could benefit, how they could benefit from the CPA. Let's talk about open space projects first. Obviously, we could do things like hiking trail improvements. More parking was mentioned at conservation areas, ADA accessibility, more into the trails. Acquiring land adjacent to existing conservation areas, that came up on another item tonight, we managed to get some. But there were other projects that happened this year in town that came before conservation where undeveloped land adjacent to conservation areas with wetlands and what would make it a valuable piece of conservation property was developed with two houses put on one little cul-de-sac or going to be and another one with a single-family home. So if the funds were available to us make a play or compete with developers for buying properties of significant value to conservation, that would be available here. One of the things that was, is coming up is the Vine Brook Aquifer is going to be shut down as a water source for the town once we finish our connection to MWRA. That is a large piece of property that would become now open space. It would be nice to have it become more accessible, turn it into a real benefit for the community with walking trails, boardwalks, wildlife viewing platforms. The Economic Development Director, Melissa Tentakalos, talked to conservation this week and presented the Mall Road Corridor and Middlesex Turnpike Initiative. And in that plan of developing that area, a lot was talked about incorporating open space into it. And she mentioned specifically the value of the Vine Brook Aquifer as a possibility for walking trails and amenities that are desired by our growing biotech sector as we compete with other communities, as Larry pointed out, for attracting employees. So that is, you know, the Riverwalk and the conversion of the Vine Brook Aquifer would be, the CPA would be a major asset in helping those projects move forward. The next slide, we talk about recreation projects. The number of projects have been done in other communities, such as completely redoing athletic fields, including the running tracks and even the concession stands. Those all came under CPA eligibility for funding. That swimming pool Larry pointed, that was a $1.3 million project that the CPA was able to help fund for that community. So those are types of things that, even things that we've seen happening in town here, pocket parks and street trees, those things have been funded by communities using CPA funds. A good example of a project that I think changed the view, my view of playgrounds, was the TRW project there that where they put in adult exercise equipment. And that was a joint effort between, partly funded by the town and partly, I believe, by Lahey Clinic. Those types of joint partnerships can be done with the CPA as well. CPA can fund part of a project and the town can part fund. CPA could do a project with a private business contributing part, or even use the CPA funds to leverage or help solicit other grants from other places. Historical preservation. Mike and Paul, you were both with me at the latest Historical Commission meeting, and they clearly stated their need for funds and some of the vision they have for things that can be done. The, a good example, I think, in my opinion, is the Francis Wyman House in town. I know, I met with John Wyman recently at the house and he gave me a tour inside, which I was thrilled to see. It looks nice on the outside, but the inside is in vast need of upgrade and just trying to bring it to a stable situation and something that could be shown to the public. His goal is to really turn that into more of a museum-quality piece where it have more public access. And that type of funding would be definitely qualify for CPA funds. And at the commission meeting the other night, we were asked the question of if CPA funds something like the town museum, do the funds still have to go through the town procurement procedures? And the answer to that is yes, if it is a town property. So the town would, you know, the CPA would fund it and then the town would handle the processing of hiring. But if it's a private property like the Francis Wyman House, no, it doesn't have to go through the town procurement. So they could get CPA funds and go out and hire their own carpenter and get the work done or whatever. But it's, there are a number of things in town where the historical funds could fund as well. And another interesting point that I found from John Wyman was he applied for a grant from something called Freedom's Way, a national heritage area in partnership with the National Park Service that funds historical projects like this. And they told him that the Francis Wyman Association could not participate because Burlington is not a CPA community. It's one of their requirements for this particular, another level of grant. So that was educational to me. And as far as affordable housing, one of the things that I think is a good prospect for making that useful, making use of CPA funds would be something like on South Border Road, where the town recently actually purchased a house, renovated it, and then sold it with deed restriction and maintaining it as a low-income property in the future. CPA is clearly qualified to assist in something like that, to help maintain and grow the base of low-income properties in town. And of course, helping to preserve the properties we do have for low-income housing and things of that nature. So those are some of the things that I envisioned Burlington could use. The last couple of slides I want to talk about are, once this, if this passes Town Meeting, it goes to the ballot. Once it gets passed on the ballot, then to implement this, you have to initiate a local CPA committee. And that committee is formed to accept proposals, review proposals, do an assessment each year of town needs, and then submit those proposals all to Town Meeting. Every fund, every program that gets funded must be approved by Town Meeting. And that committee is consisted of five people mandated by the act itself, and that's one sitting member each from, one voting member each, from the Recreation Department, the Conservation Commission, the Historical Commission, the Housing Authority, and the Planning Board. Those five must be on the committee and there can be up to four other members appointed by the Board of Selectmen or the Town Moderator at their discretion. And as Larry mentioned, it might be perhaps a member of the business community, could be a member of the general community. Some communities like Concord or something that have immense amounts of historical properties might want a particular expert to help them deal with certain issues. But that's up to the bylaw that will be formed afterwards to form this committee. So in summary, this is a valuable program. 187 communities are in it now. They all have the opportunity to get out if they want to. Not one has ever gotten out. Burlington is already paying into this with those real estate fees we've been paying into for 20 years. The cost to homeowners, the average house of $600,000 assessment, it would cost an additional $75 a year. Your $6,000 real estate bill would become $6,075. A small increase, an increase, I agree, but a small one. And people who would find that a challenge are able to opt out of any payments with the exemptions that are in the place. So what we're asking for the board here is, you're listening and we thank you for that, and to see if you would, when you review the warrant articles, would vote to, you know, endorse this warrant article. And keep in mind, the warrant article is not asking you to approve the Community Preservation Act for Burlington. We're only asking you to put it on the ballot in November and let the community decide. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Mr. Marandy?
Thank you, Chairman. Well, thank you very much for the presentation. I've talked to Larry about this prior to, just, we've talked about this quite a bit. I don't see how we can go wrong by putting this on a ballot. Of course, let the town, let the town answer, let the town answer. It takes it away from the five of us, the opportunity to make that presentation at Town Meeting. The committee itself will be formed afterwards if it does pass the 1.5%. It's an increase, you're right. It's definitely an increase for everybody, especially a businessman that I have, I own a building. You mentioned $2 million, build it up, 750, add into the rent, whatever it is, it takes care of that. So the biggest thing if you're, to me, was that in fact, if someone is having a hard time with it and they are 60 years old or older, the income is all verified here, that's what I'm reading about, they can back out if they need to, just by signing a piece of paper and filling that out and they can back out. So I don't see why we wouldn't go forward with this issue. I don't see any negatives at all. Only biggest reason is it's got to go to Town Meeting. Let the town decide on this. So that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you.
And each project goes to Town Meeting individually as well. So I think that's an important point.
I would like to be part of the committee if it goes through.
Mr. Renian?
I'll tell you that now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm somewhat rather well-acclimated with the slides presented tonight. I'm the liaison from the Housing Partnership Committee, so I've seen this a number of times. What I would, what I did like to ask Bill or Larry that you didn't mention tonight was the anticipated revenue, annual revenue under the current formula, if this is passed. I thought that was a significant number. People might be interested in what that's going to be.
Okay. I can answer that. I can kind of be involved to become the numbers guy for the committee here. The way it would look right now is with the 1.5% surcharge and the current real estate values, and I've gone over this with the Town Assessor in terms of what the real estate values are and everything. It would bring in from the residential community a total of about $600,000 a year. From the business community, about $1 million. There'll be 1.6 million altogether. And then the state, with their 40% match of last year, would put in another $600,000. So that would mean $2.2 million a year is our estimate at the, under the current, if we had it in place this year, it would have been $2.2 million coming in. Next year, the CPC, the State Community Preservation Coalition has already stated that the matches, they expect to be 42%. So going up a little bit from the previous match.
One point I would add, that $600,000 you get from the state, you get a check in November regardless of whether you spend the money or collect it. You don't have to spend it. You could save it for a larger project like a pedestrian bridge over to the Landlocked Forest, perhaps? Just my favorite.
Trying to get one to go from the mall over to Third Ave. That's been challenging.
Is that it, Mike?
That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Priest?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, you know, I agree with Joe. You know, putting it to the people, I think is the best course of action, right? You know, I mean, $75 a year can be a lot for folks. I think that's like my one sticking point, right? I will say, though, we are a very eager community, right? We do a lot in terms of our development, our redevelopment, you know, trying to ensure that we've got up-to-date equipment, right? Good amenities, strong amenities, you know, all of these things that we then have to set aside dollars for. If we had $2.2 million kicking around, it's a lot of money. Like you said, Larry, if we saved it, right, if we said, gosh, you know, in five years we want to eyeball this project, it's going to cost $10 million, it's all set, right? We know where that money's coming from. And then we can still turn our attention to all the other projects that we're trying to do.
You can also use these funds to leverage bigger grants or even loans. You can also use these funds to leverage bigger grants or even loans. You can get a loan, putting a down payment from the CPA funds, and then use the CPA funds to pay for that in the future. So you could do a $10 million project even before you had $10 million in hand in the CPA fund by borrowing and then bonds or whatever. You can do commercial things.
I only heard you, I said it's not enough for a bridge.
Well, whatever.
That bridge is going to cost a lot of money.
I won't even be here if that happens.
I don't think any of it's going to be. But no, I mean, you know, just to kind of wrap up, I think that with everything going on in town, you know, and again, not just bike trails, not just, you know, conservation-based things, but, you know, when we think about affordable housing, right? Like just with the MBTA, you know, legislation alone, you know, yeah, sure, we want to talk about zoning right now, but eventually there's going to be housing there, you know, so this is, to me, this is a great idea. So thank you both for all of your research and effort. I know Larry, I mean, you talked to me about this like a year and a half ago, you know, so I mean, it's something that I very much appreciate, everything that you both have put into it. And yeah, I mean, it's got my support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Larry, Bill, once this gets on the ballot in November, and I'll assume that the public approves it, what's the timeframe before things start to happen? And do you put a number on the table that says, we're not going to spend anything until we have at least this much in the bank?
Let me handle that one, too. If this passes in November, the next fiscal year, starting July 1st, is when we would start collecting funds into our local community preservation fund. And that, at the end of that, in that November, the CPC would decide or state what the match was going to be. So we would get a match probably a year after that. So we wouldn't get money to actually spend until 2024, would be my understanding. As far as spending nothing or saving it for future, you know, in the beginning, that's up to the proposals that are received. Of the money that comes in, there are four separate accounts that must be set up, one each for recreation and open space, that counts as one, they're lumped together, one for affordable housing.
That's 10%.
And one for, what was the other one? I just went blank.
Historical.
Historical preservation. Each of those must get 10% of the total each year. So 220,000 would go into each of those pots right off the bat. The fourth pot, for the remaining 70%, can be spent on any of them, depending upon the proposals received. So, you know, you might think, well, let's save a lot of money for a future project, but historical, you know, groups want to spend theirs now, their first 200,000 at the first opportunity. So, you know, again, people, commissions, businesses, they'll all be submitting proposals that will be handled. This local committee prioritizes those proposals, makes sure they meet the rules, and then submit them to town meeting. Town meeting can decide to do what you would propose, or town meeting can say, let's help this fund get now on this project.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you both for all of this presentation and the work you've done. I support this 100%. Like I said, like Mr. Marandy said, you can't lose with this. But I do have one quick question. When it becomes true, it's a special tax, so to speak. On the tax bill, will it be included in the taxes or will it show as a separate tax for the CPA?
I believe it shows separately. I believe it's required to be shown separately as well.
Okay. That's the only question I have. So this is discussion.
I didn't know that.
We typically vote on warrant articles at a meeting, so this is great discussion. I think you know where the board stands, but we'll probably tackle that when we vote on it, when we tackle the warrant article. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Good night. Next item on the agenda is 448 approval, earth moving permit, BSC Group. Gentlemen, just state your names for the record.
Excuse me. For the record, Robert Buckley, Raymond Bernstein, and I have with me Frank DePietro from BSC Group, outside civil. We're here this evening. Before I begin, could I have a...
Absolutely.
Bob, I've been before you in the newest capacities, I think ever since I came to Burlington as a professional. And I think that as a professional, I think the best thing I can say is that in all of our dealings, you've been fair. You've listened, you've made an informed decision. May not have agreed with all of them, but we've had a professional discussion on all the matters that I've had to deal with you, and for that, I thank you. Personally, I've enjoyed our conversations outside of the public domain, and they've been extensive. But I can't wish you anything but happiness and many returns for all the dedication you've given to the town.
Thank you.
So with that, I'll go to something very one thing, an earth removal permit. This is in relation to the property known as 25 Network Drive, which was recently approved by the Planning Board as a life science facility. We have two world-renowned institutions that will be occupying essentially half of the building. One of them is the Vericel Corporation, and the other is the Broad Institute of MIT and Harvard. And in connection with the construction of the building, which is what the earth removal permit allows for the waiver which we're seeking, is the removal of fill from, for purposes of the foundation, installation of utilities, and site work. Some of it is going to be moved off-site, and correction in the application was referred to as Middlesex Turnpike Extension, but it is Middlesex Turnpike, which is the old Network Drive that goes in front of the, of the main facility, which is shown there in the picture. So we'll go from there and up onto Route 3 into the ultimate disposal location as a, you know, for tipping or filling in the various locations in the New England area. So that's basically it. We are starting construction, as if you've been up there, the project has been fenced in, and this is a precondition to moving forward with the development, because you have to excavate to the work. And Frank and I will answer any questions you have.
Thank you, gentlemen. Mr. Hogan.
What kind of timeframe are we going to be moving this stuff?
It depends. So right now, they're in the process of setting up the site. They've got the sedimentation erosion controls in place. In the foundation footprint, there's a couple of existing utilities from the old Sun Microsystem that have to be moved. They would like to start moving some of that material offsite, probably the next few weeks. Depending how fast they do that, that could be anywhere from 15 to 24 weeks over the course of the next few months.
Before we go further, Mr. Segura, I just want a clarification. I believe this is a two-vote. Are we looking to waive the public hearing and then issue the permit?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. The applicant has requested that you vote to waive the public hearing, and then obviously you have to consider the permit.
This is two items to vote on. Anything on that, Bob?
No, but do we need to take that first vote now, or can we do it?
Whatever you prefer. If I have a motion to waive the public hearing, I'll take it.
I'll make the motion.
Second it, or?
Second.
All right. There's a motion, it was moved and seconded to waive the public hearing for this agenda item. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? 5-0-0 to waive the public hearing.
Thank you.
Now further discussion on the permit itself.
I'm good.
Mr. Priest.
So just to clarify, I know that Chief Brown wanted, was concerned about the use of Middlesex Turnpike Extension, but it's coming off of Network Drive and then...
Yeah, Network Drive is back to its original name of, the Middlesex Turnpike is Network Drive. The extension is the one that goes in front of Lord Barrett, so it's going off of, let's call it, Network Drive, and then up onto Route 3.
Okay, all right, great. Yeah, I have no other questions with regards to the earth removal permit. I mean, I just wanted to take a hot second and recognize that Broad Institute is coming to Burlington. And it's pretty awesome that MIT, Harvard are going to be here in town. We're talking about economic development, and it's just, it's really, really cool. And we talk about, you know, the overall ecosystem that we're trying to build here. They're, in my opinion, a big part of it, along with Northeastern and the businesses that are coming. So anyways, it's off-topic, but I...
I agree with that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Marandy.
No, no comments. I like the map. It's all set up, where they're going, what they're doing. After that, before, I can see it all laid out here, going down Network Drive and then to Route 3, so I'm okay with all that. Thank you.
Mr. Renian.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I see Todd to join us remotely, and it's good to see you, Frank, I haven't seen you in a while, and Bob as well. A lot of exciting things going on down there on the Nord Blum property over the last couple of decades. Just remarkable transformation of that entire parcel. I just wanted to just mention that. I have no objection to the earth removal permit.
Thank you, Mr. Renian. I can just remember the years when Sun Micro failed, and they thought that area was going to be a blighted area, but boy, were skeptics wrong on that, huh? All right, I fully support this as well, so you have a comment, Mr. Buckley?
I was just going to say, there is a boot located somewhere on the site, because when it was the prior, the Lockheed Martin site, some of you may remember my former partner, Harold Long, and I went out there in December to walk the land, and if you knew Harold, he proceeded to get his boot stuck in the mud, and we had to take it off, and he had to go out to the car without his boot. So somewhere out there, there's a boot, so. So a lot has transpired.
You'll find it during that earth removal.
A lot has transpired on that site.
Mr. Segura, anything?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just like to ask if you identified where we're going to be bringing the dirt, and if not, as of yet, can you please notify the office once you do so?
I'm sure there'll be probably a number of locations, but we will do so.
Thank you.
Okay, nothing further? I'll be looking for a motion to approve the earth moving permit for BSC Group.
Second.
Moving second it, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstaining? 5-0-0.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If I could add just one point that you made, Mr. Chairman, or maybe was Bob also. If there was a case study, how a community could be preemptive and position itself for the future over the last five, six, seven years, to take advantage of an emerging industry, be it the MWRA, be it the zoning initiatives, being the outreach for the Board of Health with regulations that are, that have been very proactive in addressing those concerns that many communities have, Burlington would have to be one of those case studies, because you have positioned yourself to attract the Broad Institute, the Vericels, and there are numerous other ones that are coming. And for that, all the people who work behind the scenes, which are on the town side, that the rank and file, don't see how much work they put in, but the benefit will be you'll have a stable tax base and continued growth.
Thank you, gentlemen.
One quick thing, going back about a decade or so, if not more than that, two in Northeastern came here. How we all sat down in this room, the interested parties, the Planning Board, the Board of Health, the Board of Selectmen, and a few others, including Northeastern University, we sat down and we worked out a plan, so we didn't have to keep going back and forth to each group, each board, and we got it done quickly, not foolishly, but quickly. And they were able to get started and get going up there, and I thought that was an excellent example, how when we all work together and we put our heads together, we can do that kind of thing.
No, I agree, and one of the best, also, it's not technical, but one of the best examples that I think the town actually got an award for it, was the three-way landslide about 20 years ago, where you had three parties rolling up their sleeves and working together all the time.
We got to move, we got to move on. All right.
I was enjoying this.
I know, Bob. We haven't begun.
Very tight, so.
Thank you, Bob.
Mr. Buckley, you staying for the next one as well?
I believe I am.
All right, so item 449 is a discussion on the, just discussion for a warrant article, Network Drive, Northwest Park, EDD zoning amendment.
I have Todd Fremont Smith from the Nord Blum Company on this also. This is a...
The prior thing was a lead into this, but this is a, an example of the campus being such a success that they're rapidly running out of space. So we're asking the town to approve some additional space for future development that will take, who knows? I mean, that campus was permitted back in 1996, the original. So it takes time, but again, planning is the precursor for success. So we're here to get additional space and to correct, or not to correct, but to clarify some issues that over the time, as that whole side of the road and the corridor has become active, have been somewhat confusing, definitions that, you know, the space, the limitations are measured in net leasable space, which from a business or a real estate standpoint, it's gross space, taking out all the things of that nature, becomes confusing to enforce and to monitor. So what we're asking is that we go to a simple definition that you have in your bylaw, which is used in most buildings, gross space. Take the perimeter, and that's the limitation. So that's one of the major changes. And the other is, while that zoning template incorporated a lot of things that were ahead of its time, the town has rapidly caught up in terms of definitions of life science, alternative energy in terms of solar, which when this was done was not even on the radar screen, so we're incorporating some of those definitions into the, into this bylaw to take advantage of some of those items. Other than that, the regulatory scheme, the enforcement, the monitoring, the coming back to the boards, the whole template is staying the same. We were making a change in one, in the signage section, but we decided that that became a little too confusing to explain, so we're backing off of that, just leaving it as is, with one exception, that the sign would increase by two feet, two feet in length, and I believe two feet in height, so that, because the buildings are so far from the road, so that they would have a reasonable appearance out from the road. Other than that, we're not making any changes. So with that, I'll turn it over to Todd, who has a brief presentation, anything else.
Thank you, Bob. Can you guys hear me from far away?
Yes.
And I meant to be there with you tonight. I went to the office last week and promptly caught a nasty cold, so just be glad I'm not there. Can you still see the...
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chairman. Okay, so again, this is, I'll do this in four or five minutes, don't be afraid, but this is Network Drive, this is the former Sun Micro campus that we acquired in 2007. We've been working on it for many, many years, and it's been very successful. In fact, the leading office campus, we think, in the suburbs. We get the highest rents in the market. We are out of space. As Bob mentioned, we've done the Broad deal and Vericel deal in the past couple of months. We thought we had a new building to offer the market, it's already leased. So we're seeking the ability to grow. That's the question to town meeting, is may we please build three or four more buildings at Network Drive, inside the ring road, without cutting down any more trees, but in the parking lots of Network Drive? And then, and I'll go over that more in a minute. And as Bob mentioned, change in definitions, some of the things that, working with the Planning Department, the Building Department, just seem to make more sense these days, as in moving from gross, net square footage, which normally knows what that means, to gross square footage, which you can measure with a ruler. So Network Drive, at the bottom of your screen, you'll see this is a 125-acre campus at the northern end of Northwest Park. It is connected to Northwest Park through a proper road system, sidewalk system, as well as trails. And as someone mentioned, you know, the reason we're getting these tenants from Cambridge is because they love the fact they can go to Bancroft, they can go to Wegmans, they can go to Redstone, and it's all within walking distance of the campus, and as well as the campus itself, which is very much a college-type campus, and has an enormous array of amenities to offer those who work here when they do come to work. We are seeing people coming back to work, which is encouraging. We are seeing office tenants keeping their space, so there's really no downsizing in space. It was initially, we see that sort of, some companies are rightsizing, but for the most part, they want an office, even if they only come two or three days a week, they want to have an office. And so this is the kind of office that they want to come to, it's got walking trails, it's got community gardens. The star here on the plan is the new building, 25/27 Network Drive, where Broad and Vericel will be in about 24 months. These are complicated buildings, it takes a long time to build them. This is the more... This is the more, the most up-to-date rendering of Broad's front entrance. And again, they're taking a hundred and fifty thousand feet. They're bringing their entire genomics platform from Cambridge to Burlington. So their entire genome project, which you may have heard of twenty years ago, when they cracked the genetic code and. Uh, they're bringing that to Burlington because they, they need the space to execute on it. So you'll see a very green campus that was master planned by a Cape, like a California architect. That has a ring road and our proposal is to take some of these surface parking lots, um, and. With the town's permission, uh, this would be a great place for, uh, infill development, where you have the roads in place, you've got the utilities in place. And you can grow the density, uh, just by using the parking lots. Uh, the zoning amendment, uh, these, these are a bit arcane, these drawings, but these go back to the Sun Micro zoning parcel one, parcel two. Parcel one is the office campus and that's what we're referring to. Zoning specifically relates to any changes that we're making related to parcel one only. Um, and again, this view shows parcel one and the, what we see as blank canvases. You, most people see parking lots, but I see canvas where a building could go or a garage or both. And we can continue to densify the campus without, uh, without expanding outside the master planned, uh, ring road. In a, in the process of speaking to Burlington, we've heard a lot of interest in sustainability, uh, which we continue to talk to folks like the Land Use Committee. Uh, and others, Planning Board about sustainability, but the campus is already certified LEED Gold, which is a very high threshold, uh, when you don't have a subway. Uh, we do have an MBTA bus that comes to the campus. That's how we were able to achieve this, but it is a very high standard. It is certified already. And it has been awarded Fitwell Level Two, two stars, Fitwell, for the entire campus. And I'm told it's one of the only two campuses in the country that so far to get Level Two for campus. So we are working on that day to day. We're putting in more and more of these electric vehicle chargers, although I don't think we can put them in fast enough, given what I'm reading about. Um, uh, the, the campus has many outdoor amenities, like this performance glade where we do summer concerts, concerts. Um, community gardens. I know some of you have seen these before. Um, we've been building fitness trails between Northwest Park and Network Drive. These are actual photos of our, of our trail network. And we continue to expand that, working with planning. We've been working on ways to reduce, uh, frankly, too much grass that has to be watered and cut. By, uh, in instituting flower, flowering meadows around the campus. This is a pilot program we did over by the, the old Palmar Building, which was very successful. And I took this, I took this picture. It actually looked like this and it just cuts down on watering and mowing and all that stuff. So again, in this green buffer that you see, this is the ring road on the left. We are not expanding that ring road one inch. We're staying within it. Uh, honeybees, these are just some of the things we showed the planning board. Those are not my favorite things. And then as we go around to, um, each, each of the entrances, we're looking for areas where we can improve. And really invest in, because it's a big campus and has a budget, we're investing in public spaces, investing in landscaping, light, lighting. And people really like this campus. We have, we have a very good, uh, history of if we get them to the campus, they want to lease here. And they don't wanna lease somewhere else. So it's very, it's a good mousetrap. Uh, to Bob's point, this is a summary which we can forward to, uh, Mr. Sagarino, that shows the summary of the, the ask, which is essentially, we're looking for an expansion of about. Four hundred and fifty thousand square feet inside the ring road, which would be predicated on structured parking. And would look something like this. This is one sketch that the architect did showing three new buildings, you know, a hundred. These buildings are a hundred and eighty, hundred and sixty to a hundred and eighty thousand feet each. They're big buildings. But again, you can see how they just sort of fit into the ring road. And we've been working on, we like this A, B, um, layout because it starts to create this spine through the campus. I'm not sure I like the C layout quite yet, but the idea is that we could put these buildings wherever we decide to as a community and working with the planning board. And then to Bob's earlier point, it's a chance to grow the tax base, diversify the tax base. On an already developed campus. So if you added four hundred and fifty thousand feet, we're currently paying about six dollars a square foot up there, uh, per year. That'd be about two point seven million dollars in annual taxes every single year. And I will add that these lab buildings, this is, this is calculated as an office campus. As we get more into the lab world, I don't wanna, I don't wanna negotiate against myself, but those buildings are worth more. They're taxed at a higher rate. So it could be that we're, you know, I just think it's a good place to grow the tax base. So again, from our vantage, it's infill development, it's the right location. Uh, most people come and go from Route Three. We've proven that through our studies. The vast majority just jump on Route Three. They never cut through the city. They never go out unless they're going to, you know, Bancroft for lunch or something. Um, and it's a chance to grow and continue to diversify the lab, the tax base. In the direction of the life sciences, which, uh, frankly, continue to come. We keep seeing more and more tenants that wanna be, if I had another, uh, twenty-five Network Drive where Broad is going, I could lease that tomorrow. Um, and I'm sure you're hearing that from other developers, but right now, it, it's, it's, it's quite, it's quite, uh, it's quite dynamic, the market. So that is our presentation.
Thank you.
Stop sharing.
Again, just remind the board, this is just for discussion only. We may, may, uh, vote on these down the road as warrant articles. That'll be decided that night, but any questions at this point? Mr. Renian?
Um, I, I'm just thinking out loud and not expecting an answer. But, uh, every time I drive up Route Three there, look to my left or right as I'm directing, just want to want the possibility of direct access to Route Three. I, I know it's complicated, but I'm not, I'm not. Because I said it, just thinking out loud, so I'm just gonna leave it at that.
Right now. Thank you, Mr. Morandi.
Well, I liked the, uh, I liked the presentation. I thought it was very, first and clear. I thought that the idea of cutting no trees down was a fantastic idea. So it'll all be in the park and also it's less of a, um. Open space is still gonna be there with the trees still there and stuff, so that was a good idea. I completely understand. This is just for discussion, so right now I'm on board.
Mr. Renian was freeze.
Yeah, um, also on board. Uh, my one question is, uh. Obviously, a lot of buildings up there and we're trying to build over parking lots. And even with the reduction and, and, you know, people coming to the office for hybrid work and everything, do you feel like at this current point? You know, the, the leftover remaining parking is sufficient for what's there, or do you think you'll be looking for structured parking?
Well, well. The, the general consensus is labs require a lot less parking. So, uh, what I said in the beginning, I think is we start to get into the weeds. Is as we go forward with individual components of the project, all of those issues will be fed it. We're not clicking to streamline the process. If you've seen any of the hearings, both here and on, uh, on Third Avenue, as we've gone through various components of it. There's a robust discussion and, and there's a lot of planning that goes on, but those are all legitimate issues. No one wants to build parking for the sake of building it. Uh, Todd and I have had this discussion added tonight of that, when you look at the campus and you see those open fields. Um, and even when you drive by them, your first entry to, uh, introduction to Burlington, when you come off sixty-two. Is vast expanse of open parking before you see the buildings. To bring that and make it more of a, uh, a, a project that pops more than it does today, I think it's all good. But those are all legitimate questions will be answered. I think people are still trying to figure out where, where the work and why it's gonna go.
Yeah, no, definitely. Uh, no, I think it's all excellent. I'm looking forward to it, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan. Any quick question?
No, I, I was just, the parking always stood out to me. Um, especially coming from any of the restaurants, back way to get to sixty-two. When you come up that hill, left or right, just massive areas of parking.
Right.
That never, a third to, not even half of it was ever used.
To Todd's presentation, when you look at the existing buildings and you see what goes in the infill between those buildings to make them vibrant. I mean, I, I would, I don't wanna speak for Todd, but I would envision that as those properties are developed. They see the same character of interaction, you know, open space, um, um, amenity space, gathering space. People wanna gather, so.
Thank you. Uh, real quick, um, I'm also on board as well. I, I go up there quite a bit, actually, when the warmer weather comes, I walk the ring. I tend to walk a little faster around those honeybees though, but, uh, no, I, I've never seen the parking lots closed. Always, always. A lot of, a lot of asphalt.
You thinking that's sweet?
No, I am slow, but anyway, uh.
It's okay. I can't listen very well anyway. I just wanted to snuggle with you.
Oh. Alright, um, anything else from the board? Again, this is just discussion. Alright, gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much and thank you, Bob.
Um, next item in the agenda, four five zero, warrant article, zoning for Novaya Ventures, one thirty-five Cambridge Street. Randy.
Yep, yep. So, um, just for clarification, I'm gonna reclose myself from this, uh, discussion.
Okay, uh, you got that?
Yep.
Hey, gentlemen, introduce yourself for the record when you get a chance.
Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Good evening, uh, Mr. Chairman and board members. For the record, attorney Mark Vaughn with Reuben Bronstein here tonight. Representing the, uh, petitioner for this informal, uh, presentation discussion with the board. We appreciate you having this on your agenda, but, uh. I'm gonna let Peter, uh, kinda walk through a, a PowerPoint, but Peter's with, uh, uh, Novaya Real Estate Ventures. Uh, they have, uh, property under agreement at one thirty-five dash one thirty-nine Cambridge Street. And, uh, just very quickly, we have submitted a warrant article, uh, for the upcoming May Town meeting, which would, uh, allow for a rezoning to take place. Which would, um, allow for multifamily to be built, um, at this location. So we can talk a little bit about the, the, the bylaw itself as, as we get into it. But basically, it's, um, a bylaw that's been drafted in a manner to be applied specifically for this one property. Um, however, if the town in the future wanted to utilize it elsewhere, it's there, but that would obviously require future town meeting action. But, uh, I was gonna have Peter walk through, uh, I know you're, you know, uh, getting late in the evening here, but we, 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 we do have a PowerPoint. I think it might be helpful to, um, educate you a bit about where we're talking about.
Peter just identified.
Peter Carboni with, uh, Novaya Real Estate Ventures. And with me today as well as not my partner, uh, Jeff Feldman. And Jeff, I think, is gonna probably control the PowerPoint as I run through. So we've been through this a number of times with the planning and some of the other, some of the other subcommittees in the, in the town. So why don't I, I'm gonna run through this fairly quickly, um, and I'm more interested in questions from yourselves or vice versa. So this is the development team. It's a team that's worked in town. Um, I was a zoning and permitting attorney here with Mark for almost ten years, uh, with Reuben Bronstein before going off and starting my own real estate company. We own, we're really a, uh, uh, we were really northeast. Now we're all down the east coast in terms of what we're doing. We probably, uh, probably, right now about six, seven million square feet of real estate and have done. I don't know, probably get a thousand residential units. So we have both industrial, residential, retail. Glad to give you any more background on the company. Um, the next slide is gonna show you just where the site is. I think you're all pretty familiar with this. I'm sure you've seen this a million times. Next one is a little bit more of a zoomed in look at the site. It includes both the Rogers Piano Site, which is the paved one on the, I'll call it the southern side. And then properties that are, there's, there's actually one or two vacant, somewhat dilapidated houses in there. It's a little hard to see from this, but then the Sorenson family owns a house they're still living in, uh, on the very top, up near where the orange kinda line goes around to the backside. But they're, they're still in there. Um, as Mark alluded to on the next one, so a little bit of history channel. Back in two thousand and six, um, the town enacted the, the two town, the overlay districts, the, the, um, central business and the civic business district. Those were put in place to spur on some mixed-use development in the, in the, in the town common area. Uh, back in the two thousand and ten range. After some initial development happened, residential could happen up to a certain amount. I think it was like twenty-five percent of the square footage of buildings within those two districts could become resi- could become residential. There was a, I'll say a, maybe not a flood, some very good projects that came on board. And then the town sort of put the, the brakes on and changed the bylaw such that no more residential could be developed. Part of what we're here to talk about tonight is the wording of the bylaw that we're proposing would allow some residential to go back in to the district, to the, um, to the central business district. But it would have to be on a project-by-project base. So if the wording gets done, it's not as if you're saying you can put it anywhere in, in this district. The bylaw would first have to get changed, number one, and then each proponent like us would then propose to put our project into that zone to allow for the residential. So we can come back to that. That's caused a lot of issues in town, just in terms of how that, how that would be done. Um, the next slide, again, this is the, the proposal of the new district. This is based on what I just talked about. Our site is at the bottom. You can see in the star, uh, in the, in the larger pink kinda color. Um, so if we go forward, which we hope we do, we will be doing a, a development agreement and just the major things of the development. One of the large things that was asked, there was a, Jeff, my partner, was, was involved with this project when. They initially came forward and wanted to do apartments and the town said, nah, don't mind the site as resi, but we really don't want more apartments, and especially in that location. So he came to us and said, you know, homeownership is really the way to go, so we agree. So if we were to do the project, this would be a condominium project, um, for sale units, eighty-two units is what we're proposing. I'm gonna, this is a, down a little bit in units from where we initially proposed. We're gonna get to that in another slide. Um, thirteen affordable units, a little over fifteen percent, almost sixteen. There's been a lot of discussion on retail versus no retail. We really don't think it's a great retail location. I think most people in town would agree. Um, there's up retail in the, in the center that, that has, still needs to be filled up. So it's just driving up the traffic numbers if you put more retail here. So we may, you know, if we were to look at maybe a couple thousand square feet of professional office, could be a real estate office, a law office. If the town really wants to go mixed use, I think that's what we would probably propose. Um, the north entrance, I'll show you when we get here. There's been some discussion about entrances and exits and what should be emergency only. And I'll show you that when we get to the, uh, to the plan and some fencing is some things that some of the neighbors have asked about. The next one really shows kind of the, the, um, this is really what we're proposing to build and we'll show you a little bit of before, after. But this is a, you know, the front building is basically two claws. Um, there are, there are a couple of sensitive areas on the site, both environmentally and wetlands related. So there was a former, um, contamination issue here that was, I'll say caused allegedly, cause I'm not, I don't wanna say who did what. But there was an environmental issue on the site that's been cleaned up out front. We have to make sure when we go do our test that everything's completely taken care of. Um, but there's also a wetland that sits in between those two claws that we have to maintain. Um, it will landscape and beautify it. Right now, when you go out there, you're gonna see a fence and a lot of overgrowth out there. There's actually a wetland that's in there. Um, this is very much in keeping with the town master plan with the, with the pitched roof, you know, on the front. Um, we will, um, outback, we're, we're proposing to do, it's actually gonna be shorter than this roof. We'll show you someday, Madrid and so forth. But this is, I think you'll have a great-looking building, you know, from, from, uh, from the architectural perspective. The next slide, I'm just gonna fly through real quick. They, just read the green. This is your, this is right out of your master plan. Expand the range of housing options for young and, and, and people and seniors. Encourage development areas with strong walkability near the town center and transit and enhance the Cambridge Street corridor. Again, not a lot of time to go through all these, but this is straight out of your master plan. So we really tried to take into account what the town's looking for or maybe looking for. This is really the change that we made over the last month. I would say we've had probably six meetings with different boards and everybody. Had said, hey, can you cut it down a little bit? It's a little bit, a little bit large, a little bit too much traffic. So these are basically the changes we've made. We've cut it down from ninety-eight to eighty-two, so almost probably eighteen, sixteen, eighteen percent. Square footage has come down by about twenty-five thousand, knocked the entire floor off the back. So the back would be a podium style, so you'd have a garage under and then only two levels above. Very consistent with what exists up and down Cambridge Road, Cambridge Street, I should say. Um, the overall height, again, reduced from forty-five down to thirty-two. That's the, how the, how it would be measured legally. Um, eliminated all the retail, increased the buffer out back, which I'm gonna show you quickly in another slide. Um, traffic, very important part of the project. Traffic right now, if you were to count, the, the site right now is kinda, is zoned as a warehouse and a retail use. I'm not gonna say there's a ton of traffic coming off of it today. There's almost none because it, it's not really used. If it were rented, I would use for what it is today, you'd have between three hundred and fifty and four hundred vehicle trips per day. That's based on ITE numbers, based on the use. For our proposed use, you'd be about six hundred, see, about four hundred to about six hundred, it's about two hundred. That's about a hundred and seventy-six, I think, is the total vehicle trips per day. It's in a, it's in a later slide over what we would be proposing. And it's actually a reduction in the, in the nighttime peak hour, uh, of about thirty-one spaces. The traffic perspective, again, if you're trying to compare apples to apples, if it were used today for what it's zoned for. And, and we built this project, the vehicle trips at night on your average weekday peak would actually go down. The, we're working on a couple of sketches that we'll be providing later on to probably planning board and town meeting eventually. There are other uses that could go on the site by right. For example, you could do between thirty and forty thousand square feet of retail. You can't do any one retail like larger than ten thousand square feet, but you could do a forty thousand foot retail center with four to nine, nine thousand square foot tenants. That generates, based on an ITE basis, three thousand cars per day, vehicle trips. You could do medical office on the site by right. You gotta get, I think we were at about eleven hundred to twelve hundred vehicle trips per day. So something eventually is gonna go there. Um, I know there's been talk in the past about police stations and other things and whatnot. The town has said, not for us or not right now or not this price, but eventually you're gonna see something, I think, that goes there. We think this is a great alternative. We think this is a great alternative. The next slide, this is, this is just showing a little bit of what we've done in reducing the project. We really increased the landscape buffer out in the back so that the entire back is now, for the most part, green space. So the back lot line is actually town owned land on the back by the Christian School. We'd be increasing all that green space in the back. The one on the left is what we initially proposed about a month ago, six weeks ago. The one on the right represents all the, kind of the good things and the additional landscaping that we're doing. The next slide just shows the entire footprint. So this shows the wetland area out to the front, which we will be keeping, maintaining, upgrading, which is why we have the two wings to the building. Shows the parking out in the back, which is basically, it won't be undergrounded, it'll be podium, but you really won't be able to see it from almost anywhere on site. And then all the landscaping, the landscaping in the back.
This also shows that Northerly Site Drive that Peter had appointed to before, which you see the, the main access would be the bottom of the screen, the Southernly Site Drive, that would be in and out. And the proposal, at least at this time, would be that that top Northerly driveway would be restricted to emergency access.
Right. Thank you, Mark. I think the next one, the next one just shows you a little bit before and after. So you want on your left is basically now sort of one of the buildings on the site. This is what you pretty much all see when you drive by. And it shows the, the height of the existing structure is about 33 feet. The height of where we'll be is about 45 feet. The live, the top of the living space in ours is only about 33 feet. It's really because of the pitched roof, the gable roof that gets up to about 45. But as the next slide shows, it's actually lower than, say Burlington Heights, which is the one on the left. This is the one that I believe the Mari family did, Mr. Mari Prossman CBS just up the street. That tops out at about 55 feet. So it would be 10 feet lower than where this is. And this is actually set back a little further off the street as well. His product was right up on the street. It's been a great project, very successful, you know, in town, just as it means a comparing project on heights. The next one is just a visual. You all know this view coming from here, basically looking down. Pay attention to what happens down on the right hand side. That's basically what the, what it would look like with the project in, you know, brought into the, into the slide. The last couple, there's only one more here, is the traffic comparison, the volumes. And you have this in front of you, so I won't dwell on this too much, but this is, this represents the increase in traffic. You can see it on the slides that today, again, if it were being used, it's about 426 vehicle trips per day would increase to 602, an increase of 176. The morning peak hour would increase by six. The evening peak hour would reduce by about 31 cars per day. So we're trying to do everything we can to mitigate from the traffic perspective how to handle it. So flying through this to some, because I know some of you have actually sat on the subcommittee and seen this. There's been a long conversation just around how it would be permitted and from an MBTA standpoint. I'm going to have Mark maybe touch on that just briefly, then we'll be done. Go ahead.
Yeah, really not much more to add, but so the, the article that's been submitted for town meeting is basically to create this new town center multifamily subdistrict that could be applied by town meeting specifically to this location so that it would allow for multifamily here. If town meeting in the future decided that they felt like there are other locations within the town center that they would like to utilize the zoning tool for, they would have that option, but it would have to require a subsequent town meeting vote for any one parcel. So I know there's been a lot of discussion about the MBTA communities. I know that the Town Council, Lisa Mead, presented to the board, I think maybe your last meeting or the meeting prior to that, just kind of a summary of where that all is. The state has draft guidelines that are out there now for comment. I think the comment period is through the end of this month. And then there's a period of time over the next year or two where, you know, the, each town that's in an MBTA district needs to implement zoning that allows for multifamily by right in certain areas. So this project in and of itself wouldn't accomplish, satisfy the MBTA communities, obviously. It's just one project, but we do feel that if it is something that the town wanted to utilize on a, well, global basis in the town center, it is a zoning tool that could be used for that purpose if, if the town wanted to consider it more broadly applied. But it's not something that, you know, we feel, you know, we're kind of getting caught up a little bit in that whole MBTA communities dialogue, but, you know, we feel that this particular project makes infinite sense for the reasons that Peter articulated in terms of, you know, it's a, it's a site that has not really had the highest and best use of it through the years. And, you know, we feel that this is a much better utilization of that property. And even from a traffic perspective, I think, as Peter mentioned, it, it would generate less traffic, potentially even significantly less traffic than what you could see some, some by right uses that could go in there. And I think it does speak to what we've heard anecdotally from a number of people as, as a, as a need for, particularly for for sale condominiums, for flat style folks that can age in place. We keep hearing that, you know, Burlington Heights, for example, has had a lot of success because folks like that ability to downsize and continue to live in the community. And I think that this is, you know, something that can hopefully appeal to that, that demographic and, and the affordable component as well is, you know, certainly higher than what you've seen most, other than a 40B proposal where you're at 25%. I think it, we're close to 16%. It, it fulfills a, a huge need. So with that, happy to answer any questions or if you have.
Thank you, gentlemen. Mr. Priest, again, this is a discussion only. Mr. Priest?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mark, good to see you. Peter, Jeff's good to see you in person. Yeah. I think all of our, all of our conversations have been relegated to phone calls. So I, I for one think that this site could have been a good site for a police station. That's not a secret. You know, so when I see this happening, you know, it makes me think of, you know, I don't want to call it a problem, but an issue that we, we tend to kind of have here in Burlington, which is we, we wait for developers to bring us zoning changes to our bylaws and, you know, it becomes very piecemealed. You know, so I guess what I'm saying, you know, holistically, you know, to other board members and other legislative officials in town is, you know, maybe we need to start thinking about how our master, master plan translates into things so that we can be more proactive as a community. Because I think that the biggest voice that we're hearing now are folks that are just concerned about this project for things like traffic and, you know, impact to the community. But it's, I mean, it's out of our hands, right? Like, like you said, Peter, right? If we say no to this particular project, there are plenty of by right things that can just happen here. You know, and so we're, we're already on the, on the back nine, as it were, you know, in this conversation. So, you know, I'm, I'm saying that kind of just barged out in the open. You know, I agree that the traffic impact is less, you know, I just hate traffic on 3A in general. I know that I've always been concerned around traffic, you know, to you guys before, you know, but I'm not sure that we can really fix that one way or the other. Specific question, going from way up here to way down here. The parking, that is, by the entrance of the amenities, is that staying? I know originally when it was proposed, it was for the, the proposed retail that we were. Yeah, it's a great question. We need to find it someplace on site only to have like visitor spots that Thanksgiving comes and you want to have a relish over for dinner. Nice, like we basically have one and a half spaces per unit or one, almost one per bedroom. So it'd be nice to have, so not married to them having to be there. I just need to find a place if they're not going to be up there. And there's been some conversation, say like with a member in Pemba from planning who has had some conversations about keeping some mixed use and maybe a real estate office or something. If we did that, we might need to keep a few spots up there, but not married to, it doesn't have to be there. Okay. Like we can try to find some spot to relocate.
Right. Yeah, I was, I was just curious because I, I know that originally it was type of the retail.
Yeah.
I do want to say however, and, and the, you know, having been with economic development and Mike has been a part of these conversations as well, you know, you guys have been super flexible. And it's, it's worth noting publicly just how flexible this whole thing has been, right? When, when you guys came to us about a year ago, I feel like it's been, it was like 196 units of apartments, right? And we just kept saying no. And you kept coming back with, you know, a solution to our no. So, you know, I want to acknowledge the fact that, you know, you haven't been trying to steamroll anybody here in town. You've been actively trying to work with us to make something work here. So I really appreciate that, you know, that level of effort. It does not go unnoticed, you know, and I, I think that, you know, when we talk about private-public partnerships, this is a big piece of it, you know? So I just want, I want to thank you for that.
Yep. Thank you. Thanks, Jim.
Hogen?
Yeah, I, I'm kind of reserving anything because I won't have a vote down the road on this, but my opinion is similar to Nick in a sense that we have an opportunity here to do something creative. I've said in the past on a number of occasions, every year we have approximately 250 of our children graduating from high school and then coming back and four years from college looking for a place. When my daughter got out of college, she bought a condo down at Holmner. And five years later, she bought her first house here in Burlington, well, hopefully her last house also. So these are the kind of things I think we need to think down the road because we're running out of places for our children who want to live in Burlington. And there's a lot of good reasons why people want to live in Burlington. And I just think that this is, this is brought to us in good faith and it's the kind of thing that we need to take a serious look at. For the sake of discussion on the rezoning, I, I would support letting, you know, a lot more people have, you know, input on this, but I certainly support the federal idea.
Yeah. I appreciate your comments on that, Mr. Hogen, too. I mean, you know, I do think that for this project, you, you, we talked about the empty nester, but, you know, the other demographic I do think is folks that are just starting out, that want to move back to the town that they grew up in and be able to find something that, you know, I mean, look, the, the average price of a single family house right now, it's going through the roof, right? So I think that this would certainly be at a price point that's, you know, much softer, if you would. Maybe not soft enough for some people, but it's still going to be, you know, what the market controls, other than the affordable units, of course. But, you know, we do think that there's a, a tremendous need for this style of housing out there. So.
Thank you.
Mr. Renian?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to Nick's point, yeah, and the site's been on our radar for a while. It wasn't Peter who made the first proposal, but I will say this, Nick, absolutely right. They've been very, very flexible in, in their negotiations, very good listeners, I, I think, and made numerous concessions based on the concerns of the various people involved in here. So I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you.
Okay, just a couple of quick comments. One, again, this is a warrant article for rezoning and passports. Some have voted on rezoning, whether to support warrant articles on rezoning and some have not chosen to take a vote on it. So just putting that out there. My only other comment is, because it sounds like the mixed use discussion may, may be still ongoing. The only thing I wanted to add was I've heard a lot of people ask for a performance art center, performing art center somewhere in the center of town. Just throwing it out there. But other than that, I think we'll save this for the time, the night we vote out warrant articles for town, town meeting. All right, that's it. Question only. Gentlemen, thank you.
Thanks for your time. Appreciate it. You very much. Mr. Hogen, is this your last meeting? I, it's been an absolute pleasure working with you through the years. So wish you the absolute best and we've had some spirited discussions along the way, but I've always enjoyed it. I have great respect and admiration for you. So I wish you great happiness and enjoy. So, thank you.
Have you been down to the golf store yet?
I have been once. Yeah. I think, I think.
I think following the rules, I hope. As far as I know, yeah.
All right. Next item on the agenda, it's a public hearing for a transfer of liquor license. This is just a transfer. Attorney Upton, I believe, is going to handle this, but prior to that, you can come up here. I'm going to open the public hearing.
Motion to open a public hearing?
No, it's open. I just need someone to make a motion to approve the notice as written into the record.
Removed. Second.
All right. It's moved to second to approve the notice as written into the record. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 400.
Mr. Upton? Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Hello, everyone. Andrew Upton for the applicant. With me is Mark Miles, the proposed manager of record for the new licensee. On the screen with us is Emily Lustig, representing the hotel owner. This hotel is going to change hands in the coming weeks.
So we are getting, jumping on applying for the liquor license transfer. We have an experienced manager. He is previously, has spent a lifetime in the hotel industry and he's previously been the manager of record approved by the local board and the ABCC at a hotel in Concord. So he has extensive experience with the supervision of the sale and service of alcohol and the sale and service himself of alcohol. And he is trained. We do not expect any patrons or city officials to see many changes in this hotel. It should be basically the same next week after we close as it is today. The only caveat to that is we have a experienced and well-capitalized management company. So probably the next two or three months, if you are there, you'll see extra carpets, extra paint, just general sort of sprucing up to, to bring up to speed. But other than that, there are no structural, operational, hourly, menu, no hours of operation, no changes of any kind. So right now the restaurant is closed. We do not expect to open until the liquor license is transferred. So that being said, it's pretty much status quo and the new owner and the new manager are looking forward to operating and we're certainly glad to answer any questions. Thank you. Just prior, point of order here, it's a agreement, I believe, where this is a simple transfer. It's, we only need one vote to approve the transfer and the new manager?
I would agree with that, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I would. I would concur to approving the application. All right. So Mr. Hogen, you're on the subcommittee. I'll just go to you first.
Yeah, I don't have anything on this, Mr. Chairman. I know Joe does.
Mr. Randy?
No, I have nothing on this.
Okay. Do you have any questions, Mr. Hogen? Mr. Randy?
No.
Mr. Renian?
That's right. Straightforward.
Mr. Priest?
No, sir.
Where this is a public hearing, anybody in the room have public comment for this agenda Okay. I will go to the webex. Anybody out on webex have any comment or questions regarding this agenda item? Seeing none, I'll be looking for motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Let's move to second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, 500, close the public hearing. Any thoughts, questions on motions on this?
I'll make the motion that we approve the transfer of the liquor license.
And, and the new manager.
And the new manager.
Okay.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, 500.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Good luck down there.
Congratulations, Mr. Hogen. Well, bless you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. Okay, item 452 is also a public hearing. It's a granola location for Verizon, New England, Inc. We have someone from Verizon with us. It's a public hearing, should we continue this? I have to open it first. I would recommend you open it, put the ad into the record and then continue. you open it, put the ad into the record and then continue. Okay, I'm going to open this public hearing and look for motion to approve the notice as written into the record.
So moved. Second.
I moved it second to approve their notices written into the record. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained. Be looking for a motion to continue this public hearing until?
April 11th?
Yeah.
Next meeting.
4/11 or 4/25?
Um.
Just to the 4/11?
Honor after 6:00. All right. I'll be looking for motion to approve this, this public hearing to April 11th, honor after 6:00 p.m.
So moved. Second.
Move to second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, 500 to continue this public hearing. Item 453, placement of a 9/11 memorial on Town Common. Mr. Hogan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For those of you who may or may not remember, during the, and I'm going to have Joe talk about the Bagnes, but we did a major overhaul of the site last year on the 20th anniversary of that day back in 2001. And it came to our attention, previous to that, that a Burlington resident, a graduate of Burlington High School, Ryan Fortini, who joined the New York State Police, was at ground zero after the towers came down and was searching for survivors in that pile, that mess of structure, contracted cancer, and died on January 1st, 2000, I apologize, 2021, I can't remember. Forgive me, Mrs. Fortini. So we had a plaque made up in this committee approved of adding Ryan's name to the flagpole out here. And it took us a while, but we have the new plaque. And it will be put on that site. But we need to have, when we do anything to any property, we need a vote from this board approving. I think I showed it to a couple of people tonight. It's the one that's on the planter. So we needed a motion, I mean approval of the motion, and I'd make the motion that we add Ryan Fortini's name.
Can we just get to the other members real quick?
Second.
Anybody want to discuss this? Questions?
I just want to actually, kudos to Bob for bringing that, Mr. Fortini's unfortunate death to our attention and certainly deserving of a spot on our 9/11 flagpole memorial.
Okay. And a lot of people may not be aware, it was Mr. Hogan who drove down to New York City, retrieved those pieces of steel that we have out there, too.
Along with Mike Patterson and Ed McLean, the three of us went down and got them and brought them back. And for those who don't know, the two rails that are sitting on the Town Common across from the fire station with the beautiful patio now that are lit at night, will always be there.
Mr. Randy?
I can't, I can't.
All right. All right. So that being said, I'll be looking for approval. Mr. Hogan made the motion prior to discussion.
Second.
Seconded. All those in favor of approving this?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, 500.
Thank you.
Subcommittee report. Mr. Runyon?
One moment. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. What I wanted to report to you tonight, you've been hearing from time to time from me on this item for the past couple of years, the renovation of 117 South Bedford Street is one of our, part of our affordable housing inventory. Today, finally, after all this time, we have a proud new, first time home buyer. She's a single mom with a 10-year-old boy. They passed papers today and they are the new proud owners of that property. They're moving into a property that is actually in better than new condition today. And that is in no small part to a number of people here, Burlington roots, who helped us along the way. And I'd like to just take a moment and recognize those folks that helped us out. Paul Geddick from Geddick Brothers Plumbing, Kevin Miller, Miller Mechanical, he's our heating and air conditioning contractor, Dave Pelletier, Pelletier Construction. Dave does an awful lot of subcontracting work for the town here, very talented guy, and just did an incredible job for us up there. Our facilities division, I can't say enough, and Paul will agree with me, I'm sure, I can't say enough about our facilities division. It's one of the probably, one of the highlights of my time here at Selectment, and that we established that, that group to handle various duties in-house here in Burlington. Really incredibly talented group of people we have there. They're thrilled to death that we sold this today because they spend so much time over there. But Frank, Nicole, Billy, Jim, Dave, Mike, and Beef, I mean, they were all up there whenever we needed something. I just can't say enough about them. I reached out to friends of mine from the American Legion and the VFW, helped out Bob Litchfield, Fred Calicchio, Eddie Walsh, Kirk Post, Steve Accaro. These are all guys I've known for forever, for decades. When we, same with, you know, Paul and Kevin, you know, I've known these guys since middle school. And when I told them what we were trying to accomplish, they were more than happy to help out. Michael Nguyen, another local guy with a very successful company, you may know USA Demolition, did the demolition work for us. And Jimmy Martin, okay, never says no. This guy's amazing. Every time anybody in town reaches out for help, Jim Martin's right there. I want to thank our friends at AJ Rose Flooring, as well as the good folks at FW Web, who provided our plumbing and heating equipment. But last but not least, I want to thank Paul and John and Whitney for helping us navigate all the red tape that we had to go through to complete this development. This home was probably ready for occupancy six to nine months ago. But with all of the formalities of being a municipal property and needing approval from this body and that body and everything else, it's been a real challenge. And I got to tell you, I'd be unlikely to undertake another project like this because of all that, the red tape involved. I was happy to do this one, but unlikely I'd be interested to do another one. So I'll end with this. I mean, Town Meeting really, really must approve a municipal house trust if we are to address future, the needs of our affordable housing deficiencies here in Burlington. So hopefully, hopefully we get something through this session and that would alleviate a lot of that red tape. But bottom line is, this one's done, deserving. New homeowner in there, she's Burlington resident, she's been renting here in Burlington for about eight years. So I'm very, very pleased that we closed the door on this chapter of South Bedford Street. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Runyon. Mr. Randy?
What was up to me tonight?
Mr. Priest?
I only want to mention that, you know, a lot of the things that we saw tonight, the Vericel and Broad Institute, you know, are in part through the efforts of Melissa Tentaklis, our Economic Development Director, the willingness of this board, planning board and town meeting, other boards and committees in the town, to begin to take more proactive measures to really capture, you know, what is, what is kind of happening in the world right now. And I really do believe that, you know, all of these efforts are and will continue to pay off. And I'm very excited to see what comes in the future. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Priest. Mr. Hogan?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I ask that you give me a moment if it's possible. I don't have a subcommittee report, but I just want to acknowledge a couple of things and thank some people. Forty years goes by fast in service of the, of the, of the community. Goes way back to my time on the Board of Health and one of the most significant initial meetings that I took part in and vote that I participated in goes back to 1984, when asbestos was found in the Pine Glen Elementary School. My daughter was a student in Pine Glen. And I was asked, because I was the only one of the Board of Health and the school committee, it was a joint meeting, and it was held down at Pine Glen, who had a child in the school, that it made perfect sense for me that the children should not be kept in that school, that something had to be done. And it so happened that there was space available in the high school where the school administration now exists that wasn't being used for anything. We were able to get, and I, there's a lot of this story that I don't remember, like whether it was state or federal funding, we got some money to renovate that. And I would have thought that everybody would have gone along with this. But like just about everything that you do in the town, takes more time and more effort because there are people who disagree. But we did get that done. The children did move out of Pine Glen. And my daughter reminded me, for many years, she didn't forgive me for denying her, her senior year at Pine Glen in the fifth grade. But it was important. And it kind of gave me the background and the knowledge that nothing was ever going to come easy. There were lots of things that I'm very proud of, and I'm very proud of the entire service. But there are other things that I thought made perfect sense. But there was a lot of opposition and sides taken, down to the mundane, having meetings about departmental budgets and tax rates and appointments to the fire and the police and the DPW. I'm very proud of all the people we've hired over the years. So it was a difficult decision that Nancy and I made. But you all know that I had the health issue and it changed my life. And I leave my head high, proud as all out of the things that this board and the previous members that I served with have accomplished, including the Board of Health. I, you know, I thank Betty McDonough for the work she did with us in the Veterans Service Office. I mean, she was a, she was a difference maker for everything we did. And I've been fortunate to work with fabulous people. I've worked with four town administrators and John Dinozio for a good part of 25, 30 years now. No, almost 40 years for all of them. David Owens hired me to be the veterans agent. Bob Mercer, John Petron, yourself and John. So it wasn't an easy decision, but it was clearly the right decision that we made. So I'm proud of sitting here with you, gentlemen, and the two of you and everybody else who I came in contact to try to do the best I could. So to everybody, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Runyon. Mr., I have nothing to add, Mr. Sagorino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a couple of items. Mike gave a pretty good overview about a housing unit 117, but he neglected to mention his self and the amount of effort that he personally put into that project, acting as a general contractor. So not being someone who's very skilled at anything related to banging in nails or construction, I'm very grateful that he was willing to put in his personal time to make that housing unit happen faster than it would have if he was not around. And again, I will just reiterate what Mike said. It's just a great feeling to know that there's a person in their, their new home and that they really appreciated the opportunity, the affordable opportunity that was provided to them. So, secondly, just a quick update. Rachel Leonardo at Public Works was able to get a grant from the State Department of Industrial Accidents to come out and do some training for our workers, just on our workplace safety. So we're very grateful for her. It was about $24,000, $25,000. So that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Sagorino?
Citizens Time. Anybody in here in the room for Citizens Time? No one? Anybody out on Webex for Citizens Time? Yes. Tricia?
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you, Chair Tegus. First, I wanted to just express appreciation to the Select Board for their willingness to engage more deeply with the DEI Committee on the meeting on April 11. I also commend the members of the Select Board who are willing to go through the personal journey with that process. But I do want to remind and ask the Select Board to look closely at the recommendation of the committee related to the wording and the language for the union contract and request that you direct Town Administrator Sagorino to look closely at the word wording and put it on the table for part of the negotiation. I think it's not only a liability that we face if we don't have that wording, I think it's the right thing to do. So that's one. And the second is, I just want to highlight again the importance of making sure that all of the agenda items or all of the discussions show up on the agenda in advance of the meeting. Tonight's accolades for Select Board Member Hogan are important markings for our community. And I'm sure there are other members of the community who would have liked to join this. So again, just a reminder, please, to make sure all discussion items appear on the agenda so people can participate. And just finally, thank you, Select Board Member Hogan, for your service.
Thank you, Patricia. Anybody else on the Webex for Citizens Time? Okay, see no more? Take a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 500. Motion adjourned.
No.
No, you're saying?